The opinions expressed in this program are not those of CISA VII or Time Warner Cable.
I'd like to call a work session to order. First, we start with our public forum. This is a chance for members of the community to speak before the board. Is there anyone today who would like to speak before the board? My microphone's not on. Oh, there it is. All right, seeing none, and we will move forward with our agenda. I would like to note that members of the public can view the board agenda in handouts, as well as minutes from past meetings by visiting the district website at www.gbaps.org. Click on "Our District" and then "Board of Education." On the left menu, you will find a link to agendas and minutes. This link will take you to a website called Neptune where all board agendas, minutes, and handouts from board meetings are housed. We will...I'd like to notice that six board members are present tonight. One board member is excused. And we're also joined at the table by two intercity student council members, Grace Sinclair from Preble, who's the president, and Noah Becker from West High School. To my left is Dr. Michelle Langenfeld, and around the table are members of the superintendent's cabinet. First, we have our teaching and learning work session, and I will turn that over to Ed Dorf.
Thank you. The first item we have is the Washington Fine Arts Institute. And Mr. Magus, I'll turn it over to you.
I'd like to invite a number of people to the table in just a moment. But we've had a lot of work done by a wide variety of people. First, I'd like to...Tom Ho and Jen Sykes and who else was in the part of the main... Dennis Christensen and Lucinda. Come on up. So basically, we've been working on the Fine Arts Pathway for quite some time. The Fine Arts Pathway is a continuation of the work that students are doing at Webster, continuing into Washington and on to East, and is a great reflection of the work we do as a district related to pathways and our ability to serve students on differing needs in differing areas. So the Fine Arts Pathway, this provides an opportunity for those sixth graders who are transitioning into Washington Middle School and allows them an opportunity to have their arts integrated into the work they're doing in addition to supports to make sure that the education is as engaging as possible. Mr. Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Magus. Good evening Superintendent Langenfeld, Green Bay Area School Board, and other distinguished people at the table. My name is Dennis Christensen. I'm the principal of Washington Middle School. And it's a pleasure to sit before you to speak today with this wonderful topic that we talk about, and that's fine arts. When I look in this room, I look on the walls and I see the work of Green Bay Area Public School District students. And that's really what this conversation is about today. And we also know that students, when they're engaged in the arts, no matter what career pathway they go, the skills that they develop as they learn and take the arts with them as a lifelong thing, those skills carry with them in every occupation, job, and career endeavor that they do. I'm pleased to be able to sit before you and to speak about the Fine Arts Institute at Washington Middle School proposal here this evening. So when we talk about this project plan, I want to thank Jennifer Sykes, Lucinda Roberts, Lori Peacock, Tom Ho, for all their work in helping to put this piece together. And this piece is not just a short-term piece. This is a piece that started many, many years ago. I also like to thank the administrative oversight of Ms. Langenfeld, Dr. Tom Ho, Dr. Langenfeld, and all those that participated in this. And I can't begin this process without thanking the many people at Washington Middle School staff, the Green Bay Area Public Schools Fine Arts Committee, the Fine Arts Institute Incorporated, and the Patron of the Arts for the greater community that support Webster, Washington, and the East Quadrant at East High School. So where did we begin and why are we moving forward? The Fine Arts Institute at East High School was established in 2011, 2012 to create a pathway for students in the arts. This work continued in the district with the Children's Center for Integrated Arts at Webster Elementary, which was established in 2013, 2014. At Washington, a piano lab and group lessons were offered, beginning in the fall of 2014, and those continue to present day. A board report was submitted with the understanding to look to the expansion of the Fine Arts Institute in February of 2015. At Washington Middle School, we've continued to support the arts and our current state from 2015 to the present. Most recently, we've done a staff realignment to support Washington Middle School's Fine Arts Initiative, specifically with that in the area of music instruction in 2017. Moving forward. Currently, there exists a gap in the Fine Arts Institute pathways with a strong program in place and/or under development at the elementary and high school level. But currently, there is no program in place at the middle school level. Our mission here tonight is to create and sustain a vibrant fine arts program at the middle school level, specifically at Washington Middle School. This is in alignment with the district priorities of academic excellence, personalized pathways, engagement, and thriving workforce. In doing so, the goal is to develop a Fine Arts Institute house, starting with the sixth grade, beginning with the school year of 2018 and 19. This unique house model would provide a fine arts focus for approximately 60 to 75 students. Looking long-term, students would be immersed into an integrated arts approach and expanded course offerings including dance, visual arts and photography, theater, choral, and instrumental music. When we think of arts, this is a perfect time in conjunction with our facilities upgrades currently going on as a result of the community referendum. Facilities upgrades currently include construction of a new orchestra room, the refurbishing of Washington Middle School's historic and wonderful auditorium, the relocation of visual arts and choral departments, a dance studio, general updates to the north wing to accommodate the fine arts, and a dedicated entrance for performances. With this proposal comes a governance request that I ask on behalf of the Washington Middle School Fine Arts Initiative and the Fine Arts Strand in Green Bay Public Schools. It follows: A Year One, a $215,000 commitment. Year Two, a $625,000 commitment. Year Three, $175,000 request. And Year Four, an $85,000 request with a total cost of $1,100,000. This all to support the Fine Arts Institute at Washington Middle School and with the goal of creating that strand and that pathway to support the students in the arts at Washington Middle Schools and the Green Bay Public Area School District. And moving forward, why at Washington Middle School? It builds on our strengths. When we talk of Washington, over half of our students participate in some form of arts, more than half, whether it be music or visual arts. It's increased opportunities for students in the arts plus positive, and it will support enrollment. Personalized pathways from the elementary schools through the Fine Arts Institute, from elementary all the way up through the Fine Arts Institute at East High School. And ultimately, it supports the engagement of all schools. I appreciate the opportunity to talk with you regarding this proposal. At this point, I will entertain any questions that you may have.
Mr. Ho and team, I know you've been working many, many years on this, and I know that you have had community input in an ongoing meeting. I know Ms. Paula was on point for it before she left the district to pursue another opportunity. But my question to us is this. When do you anticipate the facility to be ready? And I know in the other document that you shared, you started...you talked about parsing out what to expect. And you see a big jump of 600,000 or 600... Could you talk us through that? Because when you look at the budget, it's relatively low as compared to 625. So could you talk through that framework and phases that you have identified, please?
I can. Thank you for the question. So the...a couple of things interact here. So number one, the referendum money that was approved by the community. That money is going to be spent on the facilities upgrades. Dennis mentioned additional orchestra room, some remodeling of spaces, the addition of a dance studio. Those things, in the construction world, take a little bit of time. And so it won't be open by fall of 2018, which is why we have to kind of start slow into the conversion into this project. By 1920, the facility should be ready to fully engage all of those new programs, which is why you see the difference from Year One to Year Two. Now, the other thing to remember about the budget is these are going to be converted positions in some respect. If we're adding...if students are going to be taking a dance course instead of something else, it's not necessarily going to be dance plus what we're currently offering. It would be dance instead of something we're currently offering. But because students haven't requested their courses yet, it's hard to know which areas that would be reduced in. So the budget's misleading because a lot of those costs are already being incurred through some other course, and so it's the conversion of one to the other. The facilities money obviously is in the referendum piece. And then some of the other facilities pieces that are going to be necessary might come from technology, or they might come from facilities. And that might be part of an already-established budget that again would be in place of something else. So the budget piece is a little misleading, but we wanted to get everything on the table so you have full scope of what that might look like.
Will we be asked to...I mean, we're going to be asked to approve this next board meeting? Is that the...I mean, there's a governance request as part of this.
We would hope that that would be the case.
Okay. It would be next week.
Next week, yes.
Okay, okay.
But it would be pending the resources coming through the various departments to be able to...
Yeah, the governance request isn't necessarily to spend that dollar amount. It's to move forward with the plan.
Oh, okay.
Part of that plan is still in flux yet with some of those pieces.
So at some point, we will also then vote on the dollar amount?
If there's an additional expenditure beyond what we're currently spending, then we'd have to do that.
Okay, and this is...some of this is in addition, and some of it is just regular business.
Right.
So that...thanks for clarifying that. So I guess then that would be my ask when we do get to the point of voting on additional expenses, is that it's clear from the budget, you know, what's actually in addition to the business that we're already doing today in terms of having teachers for kids in classrooms and things like that. And then the other question I have is the furniture is listed as one of the under-resources. And it was my impression with the referendum that we're actually allowed to spend some referendum dollars on furniture. Is that correct?
Correct, and so that's another area that's still in flux yet.
Right.
Because if there is money left in the construction project, yes, that money can be used for other things. So...but it hasn't been bid out yet even to come to your table.
Yeah, okay, all right, thanks.
Would you find it helpful if we put that other document up on the screen and kind of walk through?
I think that's a good idea.
Can we do that? I mean, the year-by-year budget there...
Yeah, that's a good idea because that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
Otherwise, people are...
While they're getting it up...Rhonda, did you have a question there?
I do. Is this all the information that we will receive? Or are we going to receive anything else before we vote next time?
So there's this document here.
Yep.
Which is the more complete plan.
Yep.
And then the PowerPoint. Those are the two documents that we've shared.
And I think as Mr. Dorf was saying, if once we actually look at what the schedule's going to look like, I think that that might answer some of the questions that you might be having. So do you want us to walk through?
Please do.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
No, that's...
Mr. Dorf, you're talking about the buck went to the bike. It's right here.
Okay, yes.
But is that the schedule year?
It comes after that.
It comes after, yeah, okay.
Right, but that's where you're really going to see the breakdown of all of the dollar amounts. And then what staff you're looking at adding and what resources you would need, and also the professional development piece.
So for example, the first line in this graph here says "resources." And that "resources" piece is a generic term. Again, some of it could come from referendum dollars. Some of it could come from a technology budget. Some of it could come from a curriculum budget. That part hasn't been determined yet. But this is what we would intend to spend on the category of resources over that four-year implementation phase. Any questions?
And put another way, some of those dollars, year by year by year, would not be new money that we're looking for. It's money that would, as a normal budgeting process, would be there, would be levied.
Correct, correct.
Mr. Dorf, can I get clarification? How much was the referendum money that was designated for the Washington?
For just Washington?
I'm sorry? Thank you.
The facilities line, facilities and grounds, again, that money most likely would come out of the facilities budget. And so whatever is being spent in that category from facilities for that year may not be spent on something else that year. Professional learning, obviously, that's a budget item that we'd have to put into our general professional learning schedule that we put together. And then the staffing piece is that part that I mentioned before. If we hire a half-time theater teacher, for example, that means we won't need a half-time something else that kids are currently taking. And so that part comes after the scheduling and request pieces are put together at the district level.
But in that particular...but the fine arts coordinator would be an additional cost, but the other teachers would replace classes that are already being taken?
Correct, and the fine arts coordinator piece, we've discussed. We're probably going to end up in some place with a partial FTE employee. And so we could very easily add that duty to a partial and have that be one person rather than having two partial folks for that. So it might make sense for it to be a .3 versus a .5, or it might be a point...you know, it's hard to know yet without those schedules being done.
Okay.
I guess my question here, given that if we add 1.0 FTE of certain teachers to facilitate more course offerings, and you're right, it's going to come out of something else. So is this figure for looking at Year Two where there's the biggest impact, is 625,000 really the, I guess, figure that makes the most sense to be voting on here? I mean, in one sense, yes, I suppose it is that amount of money in arts costs, but it's not additional budget dollars.
And I agree, and it was challenging to put this on paper because we don't want it to seem as though it's just business as usual because it won't be. There will be some offerings that won't be there anymore that currently are. And so you are voting to make an impact on some part of our programming. And whether it's dollar-for-dollar increase, that part comes later. But right now, it's still that change.
I think just as a follow-up to Mr. Becker, and I think your point is very well taken. Perhaps we can do a side-by-side of what's already existing, and it would be a cost shift is really what we're talking about, is a cost shift as opposed to new cost or new expenditure.
It's not a true new...it might be if some certain...I mean, I get it. If certain class sizes are run smaller, then you might have a bit of a new cost, but it's not going to be Year Two. The three FTEs is not going to be $225,000 worth of FTEs, so I guess...
But it is a shift in your commitment to the fine arts. It's a pretty significant shift.
It is.
Yes.
Rhonda?
Can you give an example of what would maybe not be there that you're referring to and replace of?
Oh, so for example, the idea is that kids would go through a fine arts rotation of classes. Whereas right now, part of that rotation might be ag science, or it might be tech ed, or it might be, you know, some of those other courses that we offer, elective courses. So in place of some of those electives, you would have an additional fine arts elective that you might take instead.
And that would... And that would be...that's determined by student selection?
Correct.
Yeah, so we don't know that until the students pick their classes.
And I think one of the things that you're really going to see with this whole fine arts approach at Washington, that this is going to totally look different than any other middle school. And that's what we wanted when we put that plan together, that we're really setting Washington up to be one of those really unique situations of something that you can't get anywhere.
Jen, can you speak to that a little bit, the vision? What is...what's going to look different, I mean, aside from facility-wise?
Right, so I mean, you're going to...if you look at... So if you look at...when we're looking at the year of planning, so when you look at those sixth graders, okay, before, they were offered different courses. Now they're offered things that are focused right in their art area. So we have the two pieces that would be different from what they've had in the past would be world drumming would be one, which is very engaging, and then also the theater literary arts. So when we look at Year One and we look at some of those five-week electives that these kids are taking, they're still going to take, you know, the health, but they're also going to have that opportunity to take the piano. They're also going to have the opportunity to take World or Popular Music Workshop and then also like an exploratory arts class. So everything within that sixth grade is going to be really wrapped around what is that fine arts going to look like and what are those opportunities for kids? And then as you get into the second year, that's where we start adding different elective and different opportunities that kids have never had a chance to explore in this district. And that's really going into the opportunity to, you know, have the dance courses. I believe we had some, you know, jazz band, small chamber ensemble. So it's really expanding what we really currently offer right now.
Okay, and you might know I've got some interest in this area. How does...how do we get students into this? Maybe another way of putting this is how do we capitalize on the fact that we've got something going on at the elementary level, Integrated Arts Program? I see my friend Nancy back there. So can you speak to that a little bit, the transition?
As far as from Webster, or are you looking at all of our feeder schools?
Well, let's start with Webster and then...
Yeah.
Thank you for asking that question. We have been...we're pretty excited about this. As you can see, we have a few Webster parents here, so they have a vested interest. And we believe that children, at our school anyway, we believe that children learn better through and with the arts. And we are pretty excited to see that approach based on our conversations, that that arts integration, in addition to these other courses that are listed here, that that arts integration approach would be used beginning next year with the sixth grade. And we, I believe, identified a particular subject area while we're building capacity. And by...when I talk about the arts integration approach, it means that there is a fine arts objective alongside that content objective. And their children are expected to learn things in both areas, and they're assessed in both areas. And it gives kids another way to demonstrate what they know and what they're able to do.
Can you...I'm sorry to put you on the spot, Nancy. Can you give us an example, please, of what that integration might look like in any given content area?
Certainly, I can do that. I'll just take an easy one because we're talking about social studies. When our students in fifth grade, excuse me, are studying perhaps the early years of our country, right? So they're talking about Washington crossing the Delaware. Perhaps that teacher at that time would also be teaching the students about tableau, which is a technique, a fine arts technique, where the children actually would get inside the head of the figures on that famous painting. So within that lesson, you have not only the social studies and students learning that content and the part that plays in our country's history, but you're also inculcating them with the ability to step inside that piece of fine art, which has an added benefit of teaching empathy. Because if I'm going to accept and try and anticipate what you're thinking, that means I have to be able to make that transition into considering your feelings and your thoughts. Does that answer that?
Very well.
And then the students, at the end of that whole experience, perhaps that teacher is going to...there will be some type of recall about the specific facts that are deemed to be important to that content. But also, maybe those...the children will work in a group, again, another 21st century skill, to create their own tableau of another part of American history.
Okay, thank you.
The Webster program is really integrated throughout the entire school, correct?
Exactly.
And then the East High program is an institute where it's just a...I don't know how many kids are in it, but it's a...it's not the...it's a program within the school.
Yes, this year, there are 70 students in the institute. And that includes music, visual arts, theater arts, and literary arts.
So then I'm looking at Washington sort of as that in-between. And right now, the plan is to have a house in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade for these students. Is that the long-term plan? Or is there some plan to have it be...have legs into the rest of the student body?
Well, sixth grade would be integrated. And then seventh and eighth is more of kind of that pathway where kids would really determine what fine arts they want to be, if it's going to be music or visual arts, dance, theater. And then that would really provide that loop of going into East High School, and we would already have those kids tracked.
So when you say sixth grade is integrated, what do you mean?
So it would be a very similar approach to what Webster is.
Okay, so that's what I'm looking for, is that bridge, okay. So the whole sixth grade would be part of the integration of the arts?
And just certain subjects. It would not be all four subjects.
Social studies would be key. And science is a subject that integration works well with as well. So those two could easily, you know, begin that first year. And then when they progress to the second year with seventh grade, we take those sixth graders and they continue on in that pathway if they so choose. But now it starts to expand, and then you see some more offerings. And by the time they get to eighth grade, the goal is to have a deeper theory for visual arts students where instead of taking, like, just for explanation purposes, we'll call it Art 101 in ninth grade. Well, we can bring that down and offer that to the eighth-grade students. So then when they get to high school, they've already had Art 101. So that opens up time for them at the high school level for another course. The same thing with music, that we'd like to have a better, stronger theory class offered by the time this pathway gets to eighth grade. So then when they get to the high school, they don't have to take basic theory. They've already had it. They can actually look at that and looking at AP and college credit and tying with the turbocharge program that we've got, so...
So part of the professional development costs are for the science and social studies teachers in the sixth grade in terms of integrating? Oh, okay.
Because the integrated, you know, process covers all the subjects because you can use it in any subject. But to get started and to just start to get the teachers trained in their development, you know, going, the social studies is primary, and then science can be the next one, too.
All right, thanks.
Lucinda, what does the 60 to 75 student house look like then, at the middle school level?
The sixth grade, you mean?
The sixth grade, right. The 60 to 75 student.
I can...
Go ahead.
If you...on the next page of this document, if you roll to the next page, the next four pages actually outline essentially what a three-year program would look like for a student. And the first one up here that says 2018, 2009, the building, your plan, this is what a proposed sixth-grade students' class would look like in a house. And we've talked of...when we talk about 60 to 75 students, so those would be students who, as a sixth grader, would... who, as a sixth grader, would be participating, painting in the fine arts, fine arts house itself. They would take math, a history, a science, a reading, and in English language, arts. Within the history is the primary, and then, the science is the secondary, there would be, there would be the integration of the arts into the content. Currently, all sixth graders take a music and a PE, that would continue. And then, where the arts, another aspect of where the arts comes into play to make a unique program begins within the exploratory block. The exploratory block is essentially, sixth graders take five courses over a rotation throughout the year. And then, connected with the budget is, sixth-grade fine arts institute house electives, beginning 2018-19, would include exploring the arts foundation, popular world music, world drumming, and that's asterisk there with two, meaning that that would be one of the new courses for students specifically participating in that arts house, as well as theater and literary workshop. They would take health, and then, those students interested will continue to have the opportunity to take piano lessons as part of their lunch one time a week. Below it, it has a comparison to what the standard rotation is for students that are not in the house currently.
So, the sixth graders, I'm trying to get a sense of this integration, because I'm hearing sixth-grade house, and then, I'm hearing integration into the rest of sixth grade. So, the only students that will have access to world drumming, theater, literary arts workshop will be if the students that self-selected themselves into this house. So, when they, when they get to seventh grade, can a current sixth grader in one of the red and white houses choose to enter into the seventh-grade house? Is there gonna be opportunity for them to jump in later? Because obviously, the kids at Webster are gonna be primed, because everybody knows about it, and they're in a, you know, an integrated arts program. So, how do we make sure that you're not, I mean, maybe it's not even that way. I just wanna make sure it's not closed off to students who get there in sixth grade and go, oh, I wanna do that.
Well, part of our challenge is, we don't know how many yet are going to be interested. But, the nice thing, the nice thing about a middle school with the house concept is you can have a three-person house, a four-person house, a five-person house, a six, you know, you can add a house teacher if there's more interest and more need. Right now, we currently have two houses in sixth grade. We could have three, three-person houses, we could have, you know, I mean, we can chop that up any way we need to, based on how much interest there is.
And then, there won't be, I mean, if you didn't take these two electives, you won't be behind if you start in as a seventh grader?
Well, no.
You can?
No.
Yeah, okay.
Because the courses that they would be taking, those are short seven-week courses, so it's to give them an introduction to this. But, as they go on to seventh, eighth-grade courses, that would be a semester or a year-long course, and the opportunity to engage them down the road. These are just intro courses.
Thanks.
So, one thing the team has commented about is that they wanna make sure that there are multiple access points, so that you're not locked out of programming if you choose it at some point. And really, what has struck me as a real positive is the thoughts of how we can use this as a tool for greater in-depth engagement by our students at higher levels, as well as conversation around making sure that the instruction is culturally relevant as well, that the offerings we're looking at, world drumming being one, but a wide variety, that it's not just looking at, that it's not just looking at the purely classical arts from that standpoint, but it's a broad range of artistic talents that we hope to foster and engage all students to make sure that it's beneficial for all.
I think one other piece to this is the opportunity that we'll have to identify students and where their strengths are, where their talents are, and that we can really start to invest in them, you know, and support them at an earlier stage, instead of waiting to get to the high school level in ninth grade, that even, you know, our Webster students that you can see, even in elementary levels, where there is talent, and we can really start to nurture that. And I think that's very exciting, because now, we can invest in these students, we can support them, we can encourage them. And we know, too, from what I know Jen has used the phrase, multiple intelligence, you know, that when you hit students at different ways, different levels, that that learning just becomes stronger, and you engage them in different areas in different ways, that one student may understand, you know, something when you say this is red, but another student may get it when you say this is blue, you know, and that's very simplistic. But, I think that the way that the arts reach students, that it taps into something in many ways, and it showcases, too, in behaviors, that you start to engage them, and we see improved behaviors, you know. So, I'm very excited about the prospect of this being at Washington. I think this can be significant, and I think it can make some amazing changes, and I think it can make a very strong pathway to the high school as well. And we can really encourage the students along, and with turbocharge in place, I think the sky's the limit, I really do.
Any other questions?
Andrew.
Andrew, I'm sorry.
Okay, so for a, so a sixth grader, right now, would have math, history, science, reading, ELA, then PE, alternate music in any middle school, and then, the electives, but the electives is the exploratory block fixed rotation, right? So, that would be the case if I go to Washington, or Lombardi, or wherever, right now. So, what is it the, is that exploratory block rotation the same if I'm in the fine arts, or not? If I'm in the fine arts house, is it, does my exploratory rotation change, or stay the same?
Your exploratory course offering would be different by two courses specifically targeted at the arts, and that would be the world drumming and the theater literary arts workshop. So, for the building year of 2019, or 1819, those would be the two additional courses, which would be in that exploratory block.
Okay, so the one, so the, okay, so the family, consumer, science, and the tech ed would be, go on altogether?
They would, students who are not participating in the fine arts institute, or in that particular sixth-grade house, would still be taking those courses. As an exploratory.
Right, but if you, so, but if I go into the, if you go into the fine arts house, then you don't get the exploratory family, consumer, or the exploratory tech ed.
In the sixth grade. In the sixth grade. But, they can take those as an elective, as a seventh or an eighth grader. One of the pieces, if I'll point out on it, and it may kinda help with this, is, in the building year 2018, 2019, we've got the building year plan, and we have a kind of, what a seventh-grade schedule could look like, as well as an eighth-grade schedule, and then, and it continues on that for, over the course of enrollment, so you could take a look at to see what additional electives would be available for a seventh grader, you know, in their second year of the institute. I think page 10, we're kinda giving an example of, yeah, in the second year, they would, new courses would be small ensemble, quartets, theater, dance, jazz workshop, and drawing and painting. So, we're looking, you know, long-term, as it rolls out, that there's additional courses that would roll out additional offerings for that.
So, can you scroll back up to the sixth grade?
Sixth grade for 1920?
Um, yes.
For 1819, or 1820?
Six.
Page six.
Page six.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm picking up here, let me get on to 10. I guess what I'm, what I'm wondering about is, it is kind of a, I think there's some, there's some value to your, and I've for a minute, long, long time wondered about, you know, are we sacrificing too much in the way of choice by having the fixed, you know, rotation of exploratory block? But, you do, you do get some exposure to something that you might not ever have the occasion to take again, when you go through that rotation. Just one, one thing I'm worrying about, maybe you've hashed this one already, it's not a, it's not a deal breaker for me to support the plan. I support the fine arts and doing more of that. My only regret about fine arts is we didn't go faster sooner. When you look at something like world drumming, or a theater literary arts workshop, did you consider whether, since every sixth grader is going to have the every-other-day music anyways, incorporating other types of music into the music rotation for the house? Was that on the list, and was decided to go another direction? I'm just wondering about it.
I think at this point, we're trying to keep it clean, and, you know, something that we know that would make a positive impact, that maybe down the road, three years from now, maybe we might look at those things. But, I think at this point, we're just trying to make it nice and clean, and make it that we could build upon it a little bit easier.
Okay, and then, so the student in the, in the arts institute in sixth grade, who's taking band, orchestra, choir, six, would they be, would they be in with all the other sixth graders for that part of their music, but then separately doing the world drumming or the theater as part of their rotation?
That would just be part of the rotation, so they would still be with the kids from the red and the white house.
Wouldn't it be likely, wouldn't it be likely that the sixth graders in the arts house would maybe have significant additional instruction? I mean, far fewer, far fewer of these sixth graders would be picking up an instrument for the first time, as opposed to, or after only one year of fifth-grade band, versus disproportionate number of people in the, in the fine arts who have had a lot more musical exposure? Is that gonna?
Well, I think, to some extent, one of the goals is that the students that choose to be in the fine arts institute, they're doing it because they really like what they're doing, what their experience has been in fifth grade. So, I think we would see some stronger instrumental abilities. But then, we've also, you know, thought that perhaps, you know, an honors group could be formed, you know, that could be something that could be based upon what their abilities are. Because, you're right, we could have somebody that, like, coming from Webster in orchestra, they've been playing violin since second grade. By the time they get to fifth grade, they could be in Suzuki four or five. But then, you get somebody that's had only fifth-grade strings, coming from a different school, they are gonna be in two different levels. It's disparaging, it is. And, so how do you get around that? And so, one of the things that has been mentioned over time has been, you know, perhaps creating, like, an honors orchestra, or an honors band, or something for, something like that. But, at the same time, if a student decides to just begin an instrument in sixth grade, can they be in the fine arts house? And yes, they could, and we can help support that as well. And part of that, I think, you know, we just have to see what enrollment looks like and where the interests are, so, we can kind of guess, but until the numbers actually come in, and what the students' experiences have been, I don't think we'll know exactly for sure.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that's, that's on the radar, because I would see if we're...
And we're really going to rely on the teachers at the elementary building to, you know, speak with us about who would be really good candidates for this program, right, and within a recommendation, but also then working with the current staff that's there, too, so that everybody's having some meaningful conversation.
And if there was a huge turnout, I mean, we don't really know, but if there was, we could always look to an audition process. We look to grades, as well as teacher recommendation, parental support as well, you know, those are things that you can add on for, you know, deciding, you know, what something would look like in that regard.
Are we still doing an application at the high school level for this?
We are, but we've added auditions.
Yeah.
So, and we really needed to get to that place, because part of that, too, is the accountability piece, and just, it also shows us a student's level of commitment, and it's their first real audition for something that they really want, so it's exciting.
I'm sorry, do you have another question?
Oh, well, I'm just, I'm just thinking of the, the numbers here, we're talking about, what, maybe, a house may be scalable, but potentially a quarter of your incoming sixth graders might be doing this house, right? And all sixth graders are taking a music. So, if that, there's a not insignificant number of kids who probably would have significantly advanced experience in music, unless, of course, they were using the, maybe they did do orchestra for a few years, and now I'm gonna do, I'm interested in picking up a new instrument, and then I am kind of new to that, so I get that, too. But, it seems like if you're, if this is going right, it's going to be, probably a good quarter of your incoming sixth graders would have years more of musical experience over many, but not all, of the red, white house kids.
Yeah. And when students are, when fifth graders do register form, they have the opportunity, you know, for a beginning band, if they haven't played before, or then, there's the other levels of band, depending on what they've played in the past, so there is that opportunity to engage them in music.
Well, I wanna point out that, while the PowerPoint correctly said that the Fine Arts Institute was really established 2011-12, its inception went further back than that. 2007, when a community member approached me about a grassroots effort to purchase a new piano for East High School, because our concert piano in the stage area was, what year was that one built? That was a 19?
1932.
1932. Yeah, and in really rough shape, and with Lucinda Roberts and a number of others, some of the other folks who are in the room right now, we started talking about a fine arts strand, a fine arts institute, and this really is, I started to say, the culmination of a vision that began back then. Lucinda, I'm gonna ask you to do a couple of things before we end here. First, if you would introduce the other team members who are here, I see, you know, some community folks, and I see Mrs. Rush back there, and the second thing after that, if you would talk a little bit, just in that same vein, about some of the community partners that have been involved and continue to be involved, because it's really, really significant.
Sure. Tonight, we have Mrs. Sharon Rush, who is on the fine arts board, so if you wanna just wave that.
Nice to meet you all. And I'm really excited about this program, and have been working on it for several years. And I was even involved, you may not know, at Webster, early on, with the Camero Opera, teaching all the children of one of the operas that we were doing, a Hans Ongrandam by Mozart, and they all learned the dance that was on the stage at the Widener, and then, we, they did it in the audience at their seat while the performance was going on. And that's how long ago I've been involved. And then, I was really pleased when we started integrating Webster, and now, East, well, and Washington, and then, East. And I'm sure a lot of you saw Chorus Line last year, and I think that's what we're reaching for, an opportunity for all of these people to, to really experience the arts. I know, in my life, has established discipline in my life, and a way of study. I was a math major, graduated from Illinois Institute of Technology, at the same time I was performing, and I really think it will serve all the children well. Thank you.
We have Mr. Kevin Van Ness, Washington band teacher. We have Mrs. Kimberly Southir, Washington orchestra teacher. We have community support and volunteer Bon Vivant, Tony Schrader.
Sponsor.
And she's a sponsor, absolutely, City Stadium, and landscaping around East, and all of Washington, and she donates much of that from flower company and Schraders. And then, Nancy Schultz, if you would introduce the Webster folks?
We have with us Anne Rickelman, and has been with us as, she went, she herself went through Webster, Washington, and East. So, she has children at Webster now, so she's pretty excited to follow this through. The other community member from Webster is not here this evening, it's Sandy Juno, a Webster grandma. So, she's not here with us today, but she was the other Webster member. And then, we also have Kevin Fodle, our artistic director slash general music teacher, was also on the committee for the past several years, and we also have girls here, so, and students, so.
And then, we have, I like to call her fearless leader, our principal at East High School, Lori Fur. Did I miss anybody?
Well, Anne was with us, too, these last couple of years, and Barsh was also.
Yep. And Lori Pecat is sitting toward the back there.
I'd like to just say, too, I'd like to thank the current administration, because being an old warhorse, I can't tell you how many years we're on the other side, fighting to save the program. And I can't tell you how many times, well, some board members know, and I'd like to thank Michelle for actually walking or talking, and really believing in fine arts, compared to it's real nice until it comes pushed to shove, and then we're... compared to it's real nice until it comes push to shove, and then we're all fighting to save it all the time. So how refreshing just to teach and have supportive of the arts. And I have firsthand, my oldest son went through Green Bay schools, and as you may know, ended up being a dentist, and you have to interview all over to get the dental job. And I talked to Lucinda, he was like, you know, did I get all the, do I'm all prepared for all the science questions and the math questions? And he got in front of the board and the first thing they asked him, did you ever play in a musical group? Because you've got 4,000 straight A students going for A positions. And what else did you do creative wise? 'Cause we all took the A P classes and all the other stuff, so. I wanna thank you very much for supporting the arts and actually walking and talking, Michelle, so I appreciate it.
And then some of our, our, our community partners, would you, would you mention, please?
Sure. Um, our community partners, our Fine Arts Board is Dr. Mary Franz, I know many of you know her. Um, we have Sharon Rush, we've had Lois Goldie Grace, I mean Lois Grace Goldie. Uh, she has stepped down from the board, but was very significant for many years. Does she have to go around the table in my mind? Rebecca Proust is secretary. Yeah, Megan Dickman, uh, she is new and is the treasurer. Uh, she, um, replaced Lois when Lois stepped down as treasurer.
Jim Rivett.
Yeah, Jim Rivett, who is with, um, yeah, Chrome is his new company. And Jim has been a wonderful supporter and he's an East alum.
East alum?
Yep, and, um... Amy Siri, yeah, she's new to the board. Yep, we've got some new board members. Michael Roswell from St. Albert College, um, he is new to the board. Ken Strumiska, he is new to the board this last year as well. And, um, so just some, yeah, Rachel Monik is also joining the board, and she is new just in the last couple of months. So, um, just some terrific people, and of course, Mr. Ed Dorf, who was on the original board. When he was just the principal at East, so.
Well, thank you very much, we will be moving that forward.
Thank you.
Next item we have, teaching and learning work session is space availability, space availability for open enrollment.
And Melissa Theocoller is gonna be assisting us with that portion, but she is also, uh, working on the, the PowerPoint from behind the, the helm over there. So, as soon as she's ready, she can, she can present.
Mr. Dorf, as she's making her way, I think one of the, one of the people that struck me, and I know she was a very, um, strong advocate, and she's since passed as Billy Crest.
Absolutely.
And she was a huge supporter, huge supporter of the strand and the arts. And I know that when Mr. Dorf retired, um, she, she donated a significant contribution to the arts in his name as part of her, as part of his retirement, so I just didn't want that to escape.
Okay. Good evening. As you may know from previous years, that state law requires us to bring to the board, um, our open enrollment spaces if we are gonna deny, uh, open enrollment for space availability. And we're required to bring that to the board for approval in January. So before you, you have our memo that we have drafted. Stacy Williams has now taken over, um, the open enrollment duties as well, um, passed on from Kim Palo. Kim would have been here, um, last year presenting this memo with me as well. And as you know, we've made a few changes in how we've set spaces. We used to come to you and ask that you close certain schools and not allow for interdistrict transfer or open enrollment because of capacity. We have since backed off of that, because there could be a grade level or a specific program at a school that could be open. So rather than closing schools, when we make determinations for interdistrict transfer or open enrollment, we look at the staffing and the student enrollment with some projections for increases in that enrollment, and then make our decisions off of those numbers. So we're not asking you to close any schools again, as we have, um, in the previous two years. But we are asking you to set spaces only for special education. And the reason for this is, is twofold. One, we're not asking for spaces for regular education for open enrollment, because when you open enroll to a school district, you open enroll into the district and not a school. And with our, uh, all of our schools and the offerings that we have here in the district, we're fortunate that for families that wanna open enroll into the Green Bay School District, while we may not be able to accommodate a particular school, we can definitely find you a spot here in the district. And so we may be full at some of our east side schools or in some of our specialized programs. We can definitely find you a spot here in the district for regular education students. However, for special education students, because those numbers are higher in this district, and as you know, staffing shortages across the state of Wisconsin for special education staff, we don't have spaces in our district for, um, students with special needs. And so therefore, we have to set those spaces at zero. And we, unfortunately, we cannot accept students into our district who would come with, um, an I E P or special education needs. So that's what we're, um, requesting for you, uh, tonight. For the next board meeting, the governance request is to set those spaces at zero.
Any questions?
So, if we have, so if a family wants to, to come in and the, the spaces are zero, can they still waitlist? Or is it just no?
We don't waitlist it, the, um, it's no because we don't have any spaces.
So, now that does, that's, do we do this last year?
Yes. We, we've done it every year that I've been here, our spaces have been zero for special ed. The only area where we did have space last year was speech and language, and we do not have space this year in speech and language.
Pretty much across the board, I mean, there, there are three or four exceptions on there. The projected enrollment exceeds the, uh, caseload, uh, the staffing numbers, so I can understand why that has to stay at zero. There's, there's just, we're, we're bursting at the seams in, in some of those programs.
And this is very typical statewide, very, very typical statewide, where those numbers are set at zero.
Honda?
Is there any way to project, um, a way to improve upon it? Or do, do something different where we could actually open that up at some point again? What does that look like?
Well, I, I think it, it's a number of, a number of factors, and I know Claudia's here, so if she wants to step to the table too to add, it's, it's fiscal, because adding staff, it does not, we could add a staff person, but we may not recoup those costs for one or two students that we would accept through open enrollment. Um, it's also space, so we may not have the space for that particular program, for an additional classroom for that particular program.
It's also the, um, availability of, of staff in the state of Wisconsin to teach in those classes. Right now, we're have, we're still two schools that don't have a fully licensed teacher in place because of the staffing issues and people leaving for emergency things. So it's become increasingly difficult for us to be able to take kids from other districts with, um, added additional needs. We currently added, and this is probably for another meeting, but we added, we've added over $2 million in special education staffing for the children we have currently. And that goes against our maintenance of effort, which we, again, needs to be another meeting discussion. But we are, we are, that means we have to allot that much money next year, two, 2.5 million more next year, based on what we've projected for this year. So eventually, we're gonna work ourselves out of, uh, finance, out of business, as our business manager would say, yes.
The, the other issue is the way that Wisconsin has changed the way they, um, compensate for students with special education needs. It used to be that districts would have to reimburse the, the, um, district of origin would have to reimburse the receiving district, the non-resident district, for the actual cost of what it takes to educate a student. That's no longer the case, there's now a cap on that amount, and I believe it's 12,000? 12,500 per student of that the attendance, the resident district then reimburses the non-resident district. So it can be the case that there are students with significant costs, such as students who need a one-to-one para, or, um, students that need adaptable, um, technology that...
Transportation costs.
Transportation costs that's written into the I E Ps that we're not able to fiscally provide because of those high needs.
Okay, and I'm not sure if this is a place to ask this, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Is, so we can't accept any more students. What are we doing with students right now that we're still deciding on?
I, I guess I don't understand.
In regards to their I E P or anything that, that we're trying to facilitate?
Our resident students?
Yes.
Um, Claudia and I, or Claudia has done a lot of, um, non-conventional things to staff. We've reached out to staffing agencies to provide services, because we can't find, uh, staff here in the, in the district. So we've done a lot of, um, contracts with staffing agencies to provide those services.
Which is a much higher cost than the, a regular teacher on staff. It's sometimes double the cost that we're paying, uh, teachers on staff, which is increasing our expenditures also.
When did they cap it? When did they do that? When was that?
Uh, two or three years ago, three years ago?
It, it, it went in line when they added the special education vouchers, that, um, you can go to a private school on a special, special education voucher. So at that point, they wanted us to, the, all the rules that the Department of Public Instruction were sort of revamped in order to determine a formula for kids to be able to go to private schools on special education vouchers.
The other issue with the high cost was that, uh, we, uh, resident district could deny a student with special needs if it was too costly. So for, for those really high-cost students, resident districts would just typically deny the open enrollment because it was too costly for them.
Non-residents.
Uh, non-resident, I'm sorry, the non-resident, because it was too costly.
But being a district as large as ours, we couldn't, that was never going to be a, a reason for us to deny, so we always accepted.
So I have a question, so what does this sound like if I'm a parent who wants to transfer and I, and I call the school district? What are they, what are they told is in regards to the, the zero, there's no entry? What is, what does that sound like?
Um, the, well, the way, the way the process works, it's all facilitated through the D P I. So, um, families apply through the open enrollment online process. And then, um, when we have those meetings, we then determine, if it is a student with a special, with an I E P, that they will, will be denied for space determinations. And then the D P I website has form letters that are then generated, that we here internally generate, and it will indicate that the student has been denied open enrollment because of space availability. And then the parents receive that, that determination.
And what we've done, um, to accommodate that is a couple of, well, when this all occurred, we looked at D P I, because we have, um, a number of students who had come, who come here because of the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program, where other districts around us are not fiscally able to continue to offer the services at the level that we offer them. So we spoke to the D P I about how we could make that work for, um, the districts around us to be good neighbors. And we, uh, worked through, um, what we call 6603 agreement. So they, it's more, uh, what would you call that type of agreement that?
It's a contracted service agreement.
It's a contracted service agreement, so we are like the fiscal agency hub area in the, in the northeastern Wisconsin to take students with deaf and hard of hearing needs. And so we get reimbursed at, um, a rate that's, we can continue to provide the services to our students and, and any additional services. But that's because it's a low, uh, low incidence program. So we are, we have a number of districts that are contracting with us for that. Any district, when the district can offer the same services that we offer in Green Bay, they, they should be able, they are responsible in the same way we're responsible. So I just recently had a student who was identified as a student with special needs in a neighboring district. They were open enrolled there, and that district found that student to have a disability, and therefore called me and told me that they were denying his open enrollment, and he was going to have to come back to Green Bay. And they have another student they're doing the same thing for, so.
And that's permissible under the law, if a student has open enrolled out the non-resident dis, if it's a student who did not have an I E P, and when they're enrolled in the non-resident school district, if they're found to be a student with disabilities, the non-resident district can then revoke the open enrollment and then send them back to the resident district.
And to date, we've not done that.
We have not done that.
We have not done that.
Doesn't seem right at all.
No.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to see us do that absent some kind of weird situation of a system obviously being abused. You know, despite, despite the, despite the fact that there might be some fiscal problems with this, I, I don't know if philosophically this, this might be, and might be something I overlooked previously. I, I guess I've, I used to think that where, you know, where there's a, a will, there's a way, and usually things can, and sometimes, sounds like things do get worked out, like the deaf and hard of hearing. But according to this, and, and especially since the whole thing happens by broad categories and Madison-generated form letter that, that we wrote, we're, we're even telling, we're telling families who may have students with a very, might have just, uh, very little contact time with services at all, that's still technically earning an I E P, they're gonna get blanket denied to in something that might have, might in some of these cases cost us nothing or almost nothing to, to do.
So, we're required to set spaces by program, so that's what you're gonna see up there. We, we cannot, um, evaluate a, a student's I E P and determine that that student just needs some minor services, that student needs a lot of services, because that's, um, how you get cherry-picking of students and...
Well, and I don't wanna do that either.
But I also wanna be clear that we didn't make these numbers up. What we did right now is we looked at the current staffing that we have, and the total number of students we have, based on the number of students we have projected for every program, 'cause we have space, we have, uh, projected numbers for every one of our programs, the, the center-based versus the cross-categorical. And this is what we came up with, and in many cases, I think Mr. Dorf alluded to it, um, if you were to look further than this, you'd see that we have actually have no space for our own students based on our own projection. In speech, we're over like, uh, 50 or 100, a couple hundred students. Um, so, I think that's right, I don't have it with me, but when we made the corrections, I believe it's something like that. But in many cases, we're completely over our own capacity. And we're gonna probably need to add a teacher or teachers, yet our students with this, our overall, uh, population continues to go down, but the needs are going up. So more, more kids are getting into the center-based program, which is a lower ratio. So it, it's not like we just tried to keep the, them out, that's why we allowed speech in the past. But right now, I think many of you have gotten complaints from the speech pathologists about their caseloads and that they're overwhelmed, and that they're at 40 kids on a caseload. So to stay, stay, to, to stay at the same level we're at in speech, and provide services for our own kids that we have to provide services for, we're already stretching our speech pathologists, and we are not finding speech pathologists also. We're doing huge marketing techniques to get speech pathologists, but just to meet our own needs, we're barely getting by.
So if you were to find someone that you bring in, would you be able to have, um, more children served in that area that are currently in the schools?
If we added, um, more money, yes, financially. And I, and I don't, for some of, all of you, I don't know if you understand what maintenance of effort is, but what, whatever comes out of the local dollars that is designated to students with special needs, once you reach that level, you can no longer go below that level, and that money is coming out of the general fund. So that's less money, and, and it don't, I'm not trying to say one way or the other, I'm just trying to help you to understand. There's only one pot of money. Some of it's taken and put into students with special needs, and some of it's left for the general, the general all kids. And the more we, we put money into the students with special needs, the, the less money there goes for all students, if that makes sense, and I'm the special ed director, so I, I want all the money for special ed kids, I do. But I, I'm trying to, and maybe John can explain it in a better manner, but...
I, I think you have maintenance of effort, but the, the relationship between maintenance of effort and enrollment, I mean, that, that, that's something that's really significant, can you speak to that for a second too? Because that's a tough one.
Sure, so, um, they also, well, John, why don't you speak to that, maintenance of effort and enrollment?
Sure.
Thank you.
I guess if you're looking at...
On the microphone, sorry.
If you're, as she just went through, if you're... If you're, as she just went through, if you're looking at costs for individuals in Fund Twenty-Seven, the federal government's only going to compensate us probably for a third of the cost. So if you bring up your expenditure level and a third of it's coming through the federal government, the other two-thirds, of course, is coming through the general fund, then you are limited by our revenue authority to bring in revenue overall. And we're bringing more to this area or particular students. If we have a spike or a rise in enrollment in special education, it may bring our maintenance of effort up. There's no question about that. You do get offsetting revenues. Where we run into problems are with high costs for particular needs that could, could bring it up. And when she said you have to maintain it, I, you know, I think she wants the board to understand that if you bring it up, and currently, you know, we're at about thirty million dollars. If you bring it up by a million dollars, let's just say as an example, you're at thirty-one, you have to maintain or improve that in subsequent years. So we're very careful about trying to make sure our cost levels are at where they were the previous year or a little higher because we by federal law have to maintain that.
John, if the, if the enrollment drops in those programs though.
Right.
You still have to.
You still have to.
That numbers stay the same.
Well, there are some exceptions that will allow some flexibility, but it's certainly not a dollar-for-dollar drop. And that's also true of staffing. When staff members retire and new members are brought in, there are some stipulations that allow you some relief, but not nearly the offset that you would have if you're, if you're spiking up costs. Because you're absolutely right. We're then taking this from other programs that are impacting all of our students.
And what I really, bottom line is, we want to provide the best services for the students that are enrolled in the Green Bay public schools. And so I will fight tooth and nail for every resource we can get for students that are in the district already. But that limits us then to being able to extend it out to other districts also, if that makes sense.
We're using the classification of cross categorical as opposed to separating out what we use to say, you know, L, D, C, D, E, D. Is that being done statewide?
Cross cat, yes.
Yes.
But what we, we have center base, which then our students with more significant needs, albeit autism, ID or intellectual disabilities or emotional behavioral disabilities or behavioral issues, we've, we call those center base so that we have lower numbers, ratio numbers in those classrooms. So yes.
Okay. So I mean, if, if a person were to say, well, do you have room in, I'm going back in time here, obviously. Do you have room in LD program because my, my child is in the LD class at, you know, such and such district? How do we, how do we address that? We say, well, we don't have designated LD, it's all cross cat.
Right. And different districts do it differently. Some of them are doing it cross categorical, some are doing it by disability. We don't staff by disability, we staff by need. So, so yes. So that's the reason we did it this way.
Other questions?
Because like I was saying, a person with a specific learning disability might actually be in one of our center base programs because their behavior is so.
Sure.
Okay.
So then your governance request is?
Our governance request will be to approve these space designations at the meeting next week.
Okay. We should move that forward.
Thank you.
And that concludes our teaching and reading agenda.
All right. Thanks, Ed. Next we'll move to operational support and that will be facilitated by Andy Becker.
All right. Under Business and Finance, we have one discussion item. That'll be the referendum project update. So we'll introduce that.
I think it's our executive director for facilities makes his way to the clicker and then joins us. There's been a tremendous amount of work underway with the referendum projects already. And we are to a very exciting point where it's time to get the bids out. And I know that Mr. Stengel has worked tirelessly in partnership with the schools affected, wanting to make sure that voices are heard, that there's input from key stakeholders, and this is just the beginning. But I think that it's a really exciting time and there's some really great work that's been done. So I want to thank you because it's kind of been a solo situation for a while here, but I'm in partnership with a lot of folks to get us here. So thank you and looks like you're ready to go.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, we have been working with architectural firms since the April referendum for the last eight months or so. So as they're finalizing their plans and putting the last details, we're getting into material selections and colors and a lot of the fun stuff. So our first project that we're looking to put out for bids. Listen. Is, sorry, is Eisenhower Elementary School. So there, we're going to be adding classrooms to increase the capacity six hundred so we can bring back the four and five K students that are at the early learning center. So that project is scheduled to go out for bid February first, receive bids on March first. And then we'll be bringing our results and recommendations on the March twelfth board meeting. Tentative start construction beginning of April and by mid-February of two thousand nineteen be able to occupy. Now, we will not be bringing back the students at the early learning center in the middle school year. We'll wait until the fall of two thousand nineteen. This is an exterior view of looking from Shane Street. What you're seeing with the glass is the community room and this would be the community entrance into that area where we would have, also have a dental suite and room for medical, mental healths. The two-story portion behind that are the classrooms. This is a interior of the classroom wing. So down the corridor, there would be six classrooms off of this area. And these open areas are for students and staff to come out and work in small groups individually to have a teacher or a staff member working with one or two students or with students just to work on their own. All the classrooms that are surrounding this has, have vision out into this area for supervision. The next, excuse me.
Michelle?
Thank you. Just a couple of points. If you, if you go back to the picture, one of the things that we went to our community to talk about is the importance of community spaces. And that's what you're talking about is we've gone through so many of our, our schools have engaged in trauma-informed care and really working to support students through mental health. Eisenhower is a really important community-supported school. And I think that that's, that's a really important piece of that. The other thing you said that's really critical, and maybe you could address the fact that as we're bringing the children home from the early learning center, we're bringing them all at one time so that facility, we will no longer need those rental, that rental space. And the importance of bringing them at the same time is because of the way the early learning center is currently staffed. Is that accurate? So that, that would make the most sense?
That's correct. And we had phased it and as we'll see when we get into the Barrett, that the projects would get completed so that all the students would move back to the early learning center for the fall of two thousand nineteen.
To their home school then?
Yes.
From the early learning, okay, thank you.
So the next project to go out for bids will be the Webster Elementary Fine Arts, which we talked about a little bit earlier this, this evening, where we're adding a stage addition onto the existing gym cafeteria, music room, new art room and some storage areas. That project is scheduled to go out February eighth, receive bids on March eighth. And then what we're looking at doing is having a special board meeting prior to the work session on April second to approve the bids for this project. We'd start construction late April, beginning of May and have it done at the end of the calendar year so that when the students return from winter break in two thousand nineteen, that, that area would be used. Okay. And then Barrett Elementary, which is our largest project, which is a new school for six hundred students built on the same site. We're scheduled to go out for bids on February twentieth, open bids on March twentieth and also bring it to a special board meeting for your review and approval on April second. This would also begin at end of April, beginning of May and be completed in August of two thousand nineteen. So this works in with the scheduling of bringing those students along with Dan's and Sullivan all completing at the same time.
Questions?
Just, the clicker's not responding. Yes. Okay. This is the latest rendering of the exterior of the building. It's looking east, looking west at the east elevation. So if you were standing on the roof of the existing Barrett School and looking into the field, this is what you're, what you would see. Yes. This is an interior of the cafeteria. It's a two-story, two-story space with the corridor, classroom corridor above looking over. The windows on the left-hand side would be looking out towards the entering, entrance plaza and the playground area. Okay. This is one of the classroom pods. It's, you can see it's a two-story with a connecting stair. So there's first floor, there's the locker space. And similar to Eisenhower, there's small group breakout areas. And then there's four classrooms on both floors that connect to this space. It's hard to see in this, but there's glass from all the classrooms so that there can be vision. The lockers are kept very low so that the teachers can see the students when they're in their lockers and around the lockers.
Katie?
Mike, where's the elevator?
The elevator is, it's by the library, which is actually, I think, the next slide. So as you come in the main entrance, I don't have a, of the plan, but it's, it's right by this library. And so as you come in the main entrance, there would be a lot, the elevator would be right there next to the main office and that would go upstairs. And this is above the main office area. So this is a picture of the library. On the right-hand side is a lot of windows that are overlooking the main entrance.
Mike, would you go back two pictures, please? Above the, or the two parallel green lines are, is that open space above there?
What that is, is where you see the, the strip lights, that's the structure for the floor above. And then there's a drop ceiling, acoustical ceiling between the two green stripes.
Okay. It just, it, it looks like that, that structure that's going kind of east to west there or from left to right kind of disappearing into dead space there. It looks like that's all open under there?
Well, in that space is where you would have your mechanical ductwork through there, if that's what you're looking at.
Okay. How thick is, is that? That looks similar to this?
I'm guessing it's about three feet, about a three-foot drop or so.
All right. Other questions?
Okay. Then the next project to go out for bids would be Edison Middle School, where we're adding a new cafeteria in Commons. We're scheduled to go out for bids on February twenty-eighth, receive bids March twenty-second. Bring this to also this special meeting on April second for approval. This would begin again about the same time as the other ones, end of April, beginning of May, and be done by the end of the two thousand eighteen to be ready for when students return after winter break. Okay. This is exterior, looking from the parking lot into the new cafeteria and entrance. Now this, project got a little bit bigger than what was originally planned because of the location. We were originally planning on just putting in a cafeteria, but with, with it located in this area and being adjacent to the gym, new entrance that services both the gym and the cafeteria. So I'd expanded it by a couple thousand square feet. And here's interior. This wasn't in the slides that were sent out. I just received this about two thirty this afternoon. But this is an interior, so you can see where the people are walking to the right, that is now a new corridor that exits the building that will service both the gymnasium and then the cafeteria. There's also additional restrooms that were built to service the gymnasium because right now they're reusing, actually the restrooms that were right off of the locker room area.
Any questions on those?
We had talked about an additional, I'm sorry. Go ahead, you go ahead.
So I'll just talk about them.
They might not hear you though.
So these are very impressive spaces initially, and I think they also have a good functional use. So that's, that's always good. Thing I always think about windows are, there are a lot of them. And windows are, windows are good with natural light and stuff, but they also, considering in case anybody has missed it, our weather does not like to cooperate with us. Recent streak of not happy temperatures outside. So windows do get fairly expensive. So I, I always think of windows. So you know what I mean? Like if you look at just, just this item in particular, that is a lot of glass, which is just what I think of because external glass. I always think of those as interesting. Although like is that, basically I'm asking, is that factored in? Because I think there are going to be greater costs than one would think associated with a lot of external glass.
Well, the, the windows are part of the budget and, and the heating system is designed specifically so where we have additional windows, we, we add additional heating along those to keep those, the temperature tempered along those.
That's awesome. So it's already factored in?
Correct.
And are these fairly energy efficient?
Yes. They're a lot, lot better than a lot of the windows that we have.
The windows in my house, Noah, I feel your pain, believe me. But these I would hope would be more.
And they're also south-facing. They're south-facing windows, right?
These are.
Yes.
Is it, is it relatively, I mean, I suppose obviously if you were to do, I suppose in, in Green Bay, if you were to, not that I would ever suggest this, but if you were to do next to no windows, you probably might save a little bit or not even. I mean, has that been costed out? That I would hope that if we're gaining, because there's heat and then there's also light considerations too. So if we're gaining, you know, we're going to swap off, pay a little bit less in light, a bit more in heat. Is it, I guess, I'd like to know that it's at least close.
Yeah. What we found out is, you know, back in the seventies, and you can go back to a lot of our schools, back in the seventies, they went in and closed down a lot of the windows, east, west, Fort Howard, Washington. And they closed down a lot of them. And what they determined is there wasn't a lot of cost savings because first of all, you're using a lot more light to light those classrooms. And electricity is actually our highest cost in our district compared to even our gas usage. You know, our budget for electricity is double of what we have for our heating. And so what they found out is that they weren't saving the money. Plus, you know, the daylight has, you know, been studied and that it provides, helps with student learning and people feel better with the more daylight. So it's been a trend to go back to the windows and open up those, which we've done at most of our schools. And the other thing is that the windows these days are much more energy efficient and the heating systems that are in there that can heat the windows and provide an air curtain along the windows are much more efficient than what they were.
Did we stay with, with just the one egress point in this?
No, there is a second one and you can't see it. I don't know if I can see it on the previous picture or not. No, it's behind the tree. There is a second egregious point back in the far corner where the tall windows and the shorter windows with the panels above it meet. There's a second door, emergency exit door.
Okay, did you?
That was it.
Okay, then.
Did you?
Okay, then the, two more projects that, the Washington and the East, which both had to do with the fine arts. We talked a little bit earlier about the Washington project, and then the East project, which will be replacing the stage floor, adding some gallery space, a black box room. And then we're gonna be looking, or we are working with the architects on moving the art rooms into the wing closest to the fine arts area, which would be the same location as the existing agribusiness, moving the agribusiness area back to the tech ed area along with their CAD lab. So, these projects aren't quite as far along, so we don't have the bid dates set, but they're still tentatively to go out this spring, and they would be completed later this winter, either late 2018 or early 2019.
Why don't we have bid dates on these?
Because we're just not quite as far along. We just met this afternoon again with Lucinda and a couple of other fine arts people talking about the sound systems in the auditorium. So we're still working on the details. So until they can, you know, firm up a few more of the details and feel like the plans are far enough along, we'll start setting those bid dates. The same with King and Work React. Those are secured entrances. They're fairly small projects where we're just be adding some frames and redoing the offices a little bit. Those projects will be constructed this summer, beginning sometime in June, and can be completed in August before school begins. Jefferson is a project similar that we've done in a couple other schools, where we're gonna be moving the office into a, a classroom area adjacent to the front entrance, and then we'll be remodeling the office back into classroom space. And that project, again, will be done this spring, since the classroom is available. It's, there's staff in there right now that we can relocate, and then we'll have that complete before the beginning of school this fall. And then the last two projects in this first phase are Doty and Keller. Both of them are very similar, where we're adding an office addition. It's very similar to the addition that we put onto Martin a few years ago, which will include a secret reception area with a sick room, and then there will be a principal's office and a conference area. And that'll be added on to where the, we are into the building now, and it'll be a more of a entrance that'll be visible, because right now, when you go to those two schools, finding the front entrance is a little difficult. So those projects are being finalized now, and we'd be starting those this spring and be finishing up later this fall sometime. So that's the update on the 11 projects that are going out for bids this, this spring. And then, starting in probably about May, April or May, that we'll be looking at the other eight projects and for the second phase of the referendum.
Can you remind us of what those eight are?
They would be the additions on to Dan's and Sullivan, which are meant to bring back the ELC kids back to those home schools. There will be addition onto Martin, which is a new gym and some classroom space. And then Jackson, which will have a, a new library and gymnasium space. Wilder, which is a secret entrance. Red Smith, which is some additional classrooms. And then the other two projects would be the relocation of J-Daw, and then we have some money in the referendum to do community spaces.
Thank you.
Right, other questions?
Okay, and then, thank you, and then we'll move on to the East High 2018-19 calendar.
Okay, I'd like to invite Tom Hull and Lori Ferk to the table, please. So for discussion, we, under Lori and Tom's leadership, we went back and looked at the calendar for East High School, including staff and the Green Bay Education Association. We held a meeting and worked out a calendar that we think will best meet the needs of the students, the families, and, and our, and the new schedule that East is going to move forward on. So, Tom and Lori, wanna make any comments about it? We, we attached it to, to you.
No, I, I think, as, as Jean said, I think we went through a good process of working with staff and GBA and the district office, and we gathered input from lots of different stakeholders and came up with a product.
If you notice, it fits to the calendar that was already in place for the whole district itself. So we're very mindful of the elementary days off. We talked about that with our trimester, and you'll see that, I believe there's only one day that we do not match, and that would be at the end of the school year when we'd need a full day for our seniors to finish the school year. The other days also match as we're going through. There are sometimes, there's three nights of parent-teacher conferences, and to look at pieces, right now, our teachers have four nights of parent-teacher conferences. To accommodate that, we'd actually have some professional development that would be required before school starts to kind of get the flow of going into a trimester for next year and start with our teachers and make sure that they're prepared for the trimester change. Other than that, if there's any questions, we can help answer that.
Brenda?
In our original discussion about the trimesters, we talked about having spring break be in between second and third trimester, and it's not in this calendar. Is there some conversation about trying to ease our way into that, or is this gonna be something we have to live with?
And that would have to be, there'd be have to be a conversation with the trimester moving forward, and then working next year when the calendar is set, so that that, that spring break would accommodate for the end of trimester two, and then the following week would be then spring break. In this initial case, according to the numbers and everything else that we have to, we abide by for the trimesters, the first trimester has 59 days, and the second trimester has 60 days, and it fits one week prior to spring break. So moving a spring break just for East High School doesn't.
Right, but it, but looking.
But later on, we'd have to work with it.
Forward, we're gonna try to ma, make that happen, is that the idea?
The only reason we can find out for why spring break is when it is, is because that's when it's always been.
Right.
So I think if we wanted to change it, I think we could for next year.
Okay.
That used to be later in the spring, and was moved to try to break up the semester. So we've just continued to have it this, this week, and it's a, it's a week.
That many families and our staff want to know ahead of time because they plan around it. So if we did change it, we'd wanna make sure that it was done early enough to offer that.
I thought when we looked at the, looking at the overall, were, are, were we, for 18-19 then, were we, except for East, were we down to zero days where elementary is off but high schools are in? I thought there was, we were still left with one of those, but we're actually down to zero of those except for East?
I think we're down to zero, but I would have to go, I'll go back and double check that, but I think that.
Were we maybe down to one for this, this year? There was still one, but then going forward, we were gonna be.
I'll have to double check that.
You can just get back to it before the, before the next one.
Yeah, I'll ask. I, I think that, I'm not sure that this year we even had any of that.
Oh, we had, we had one, didn't we?
We did have one.
Wasn't there, wasn't there a day that, some student somewhere was telling me that there was a, a date that.
I'll, I'll look and I'll.
Yeah, there, there was, I think there was one this year. But that's, that's great. If we were going from, you know, one, and we couldn't quite get down to, to zero, but we could get to a quarter, that's, that's good. Any other questions? Yeah, day before Thanksgiving, thank you. That was one of those, but that's not the case in, in this.
Do they have elementary off?
High school was on and elementary was off, or half day?
Right. In this case, elementary is off and East is off?
Yes.
The other high schools and, and middle schools would be on?
Well, okay, so it says here that, it says that November, we're talking next year, right? So, oh, I, I was looking at just the early.
You're looking at November 21st.
I think you're talking about when East, when the high school is in session, but the elementaries are not.
Okay, so we did have, so actually, we had the opposite, and we have, it was going to be one day still of that, but now it's three-quarters, because the East will actually be off, but the others won't yet, so, okay. But there's still, so there's just one?
May 31st, I think, is the day that Lori was referring to. East High School is in session all day, and elementary students have AM only, because there's a teacher work day in the afternoon.
Okay, so every, all right, so every high school has that situation happen to it once. East doesn't experience that in November, but experiences it in May?
But so do all the, all the other high schools, because that's our last senior day. So you'll see, elementary will have a half day on that day on, on May 31st. And that'll be our last senior day, which usually those seniors then are excused about 1:30 in the afternoon, and then the following day basically is, or maybe I misunderstand Sandy's piece, but the senior day, the last senior day technically is the practice day at the Crest Center for, for us as schools.
Okay.
High schools. So the day prior, that Thursday prior, is when the seniors are then checked out of the high school, everything is, their grades are checked, their, then everything's, is proper and ready for graduation purposes. So that's, that's the only one that has to be in there, just to make sure that we've completed that.
It's still like to, yeah, it's still like to see us make that November one go away, like, going forward, but I'm fine to see it at least happening. Other questions? I wanted to ask about exam days. Are those, are we not even doing that anymore?
We don't have regular exam days this year in the, in the semester process. The exam days are at the end of the tri, at the end of semester, which would be in our trimester. What's been happening is many, many of our, many departments and many classes are actually doing projects for their semester exams, rather than doing a semester exam to sit there for 90 minutes. And so teachers were doing projects prior and not knowing what to do for 90 minutes. So, so we've exchanged that, and we're looking at having exams that are actually involved within the classroom itself. So we're in a normal classroom situation where we have our 51 minutes. Some teachers are gonna do two class periods of them, so they'll do a test one day, and then the following day, finish that testing process off. But otherwise, it was almost to a point where our teaching staff was shutting down a week before, just to get the three days of semester exams.
And was that, is this the first year we put that in place?
Correct. That's the first year that it's across the board for all.
Across the board, yeah.
For all high schools, yes.
And did that count, did that go to the board?
It, it did, actually. I, I remember very clearly when we had our calendar meeting last year in preparation for this year, when there was a discussion, actually, it was one of our teaching staff members who sits on our committee that suggested this, and we all said, that's great, that makes a lot of sense, because, because it's not, as Lori said, there's projects sometimes that the, the teachers will do, and they don't need this specific block of time. So they incorporate the exams just as part of their teaching regular classes.
I think this needs to be added to a different board discussion, because I think it will take a lot, it could take a long time. Sorry. The student opinion of this is overwhelmingly negative.
Of course, we haven't actually done it yet, because, right, that's coming up quite soon. But as for now, I know quite a few teachers that are not, that are, they're, they're not doing much, like, they're given, they're given more, there's not the, they're given more time for, and I think it's meant to dis, because a lot of projects were happening, I think it's meant to discourage, like you said, just sitting in a room for 90, 90 minutes, and especially not knowing what to do with that time. I don't think it works, but we will, I think, because, I think that needs to come to a board meeting after we do this for a year, and we investigate how, what students and teachers think about it, because I think this is a large issue that doesn't just pertain to East. But I know a lot of teachers are not enthusiastic about the idea, nor are students. So I think we do need to bring that up as a separate topic. And I do know the ICSC was planning on bringing it up with the board at our next board meeting in February. My understanding would be is the topic of semester exams versus no semester exam time, that part?
No, it's, sorry, can I? So we were just having a conversation because of the exam schedule this year, and how basically everyone was really against how it is scheduled this year, and how we were all confused by it was even changed, because there was nothing, we didn't view that there was anything wrong with it. So it's not that we don't want semester exams or anything, but now our teachers have to do two, so now instead of preparing for like, three days, I have to prepare for three days, but I have four tests every single day instead of three or two, which I would have before. So it just.
So just looking at the semester exam and any measures what you're, you're asking?
Yeah, it's, I think, in a roundabout way, it made finals a lot more stressful than they already were.
Yeah, I guess I was, you know, when I heard, heard that there were some, some concerns about exam days, and I guess fair, fair enough, if we voted to, to try this last year, I, I would, I'm sure I would have remembered if there was a lot of concern coming forward about it, and there, there wasn't, so it kind of slipped under the radar, which is why I'm surprised to see people, that students and teachers, to hear that they're feeling surprised by this or are caught off guard is a little, a little concerning. I mean, I think, I think it does make sense to have some opportunity for discretion as to how we're gonna do this, but I completely get the point that if I'm now going to have, you used to be able to plan study time and so forth based on, you know, getting, getting all your ducks in a row for.
But, I mean, and, and that's where I would say in particular, when, when you're looking at some of these pieces that we've got. If you look at it, it's a 90-minute test, so the trimester fits it, because it's a 75 minutes, you're only missing 15 minutes, and typically it's completed. So that's a nice advantage to this process.
Oh, it's a great advantage for the trimester.
At the end of our trimester, we'll actually have, probably, we will have two days of that process, so that there's not an overload for students, because there's five courses they would take, and so that you would have that process. I don't know if that's part of the discussion that needs to be in this process tonight, but just understand that what we're trying to do is we're looking at learning as a process rather than just a finite date. And many pieces to the puzzle have been looking into what happens beyond high school. But right now, we're looking at, when I was a teacher too, pretty much the only changes that a semester exam did was Border Patrol students, I'd call them Border Patrol students, any students that were on that defining edge of either A or B, or C, you know, B or C, those, those are the students that actually had an effect on semester exam. And so that's what we've been looking at, is that growth and ability. That didn't take away from the semester exams of APs and so forth, we still continue to have that. And also, in defining pieces too, is my, my daughter is at, is in college right now, and many of her courses don't even have a final exam, that's all the coursework all the way through, and obtaining that learning as a processing. So, there are changes not only at the high school level, but there are changes at the other levels, but I'd be very interested to actually have some conversations with you about that and where that is.
Yeah, but, but hearing what Grace and Nora are saying, it, it sounds like a significant number of staff did not embrace that schedule change as a second order change, just as the first order. They're, they're trying to take what they did in the old semester exam schedule and just do it over two days, which I didn't understand that to be the intent, as, as we talked about that.
Right. And, and right now, I mean, that was placed into the overall calendar, I had no decision on those. I'm just, I'm, I'm making the process with our, our staff members, and over that three-day period after, which was. which was next month, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I've broken it down as much as I possibly can in a three-hour period within those, those processes. I try to make sure that I had a lunch hour within that, and I'm, I'm trying to work with the teachers at that point in time.
So, so, I'm sorry, at the, so at the building level, individual buildings are working out arrangements for these days? So it might not look the same, it may look different between buildings?
Correct. And we've also indicated those things to each, you know, each member of the principals group has, has communicated that. It was based on our BLT, that's, that's the decision we made at East High School. So we asked our BLT what would be the most effective, and what we had. So we went to the teacher level and asked that process about the change, and that was about two months ago or more, and so that's the decision that we made. Now, is it the right decision? We're not certain until we go into it.
So does your, so do your days look something different than first period meets traditionally through time, second period meets traditionally through...
Well, it's just a normal day, and so on those first days, it might be hours one, four, and eight, taking the test on that first initial Tuesday.
But within the, the traditional, the bells don't change.
The bells don't change, no.
But you've made sure that, so at least at East High, I'm not going to have, if, if I have, for, for example, if I have front-loaded first through fifth, some of the, some of the more intensive core subjects and more elective stuff in the later part of the day, I'm not going to get hit with five on the same day. You've made adjustments.
That's, that's the adjustments that we're, we're making.
Just, I'm sorry, at Preble, that's not how we're doing it. We have it by course subject, so for some reason, math and science are on the same day. So if you have multiple science classes and, like, an advanced math class, you're going to be taking all those on the same day, and then all your electives are on the same day, and, like, social studies are on the same day, but like, I have four social studies classes, so those are all on the same day. And then also, like, then I can also have, like, another test that day as well. So it, it's just, like, a lot of tests on one day.
As I said, I, I made the adjustment at East High School, depending on my BLT. My teachers had made those decisions as we were talking about those, because we knew it was approaching in October, and we made that decision in October, we set that out for students, and we tried to make those adjustments so that wouldn't happen. It can't be perfect, because you could probably have math first hour, and you have science eighth hour, and that's the way it landed for that day, but we were trying to make those adjustments so there would be time in between. And I do, do know that I only, we only have two hours of testing on the Thursday, before the day off on a Friday. So if there had to be some adjustments with students, we'd make those adjustments independently. Thank you, Ed East, for, yeah, I think you, I think you handled this in a quite decent fashion. Couple other schools were thrown into, I know at Preble, they broke it down by course. At West, there was no guidance given to teachers, so some people are stuck with five exams on one day, some are stuck with more, some are stuck with less. So every shift that you tried, you tried your best with the new schedule to balance it out, I think it does, like I said, this needs to be a meeting topic for another meeting, where we can discuss more about how it affects every school, because right now, this is specific to East more. So when we can just, and especially after these exams happen, and we get more feedback, I think we should, yeah, this is a separate topic.
What I'd like to suggest is that the, the ICSC, after you've taken exams, that we can gather input, and then Dr. Ho, when he meets with the secondary principals, can have this as a, an agenda topic, so that we can take the, the input fresh from your experiences, make sure that it's, that there's conversation around it, and we can, we can further discuss what things could look like for the coming year. But good points.
All right. Anything else I can tell?
All right.
If that's simple, that would conclude the report. More questions?
We do have a closed session. I'll read that motion. Closed session is scheduled for Monday, January 8th, immediately following the German of the work session meetings pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(c) considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851(f) considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which, if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigations, to wit personnel matters. Pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851-e, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, more specifically to wit potential contracts. And pursuant to Wisconsin Statute 19.851-g, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, to wit potential litigation matters. The meeting will begin an open session to consider the appropriate motion for a closed session, so provided by law.
So moved.
I'll second, I would like discussion before we vote.
Okay.
Brought to my attention that while we may be adhering to the strict letter of the law with our notice on that, and some current concerns about openness on that. I took some time to look at agendas for the city council, the county board, a number of school districts, the, the larger urban districts, and see that the agendas do post that there would be a, a vote for going into a closed session, along with a, a general description of the subject matter. And we're really not doing that. We do, in our green letter, on Friday, we get advice that there is going to be a closed session, but not really any information about what we're going to be talking about. And as I read the, the latest Attorney General's guidelines on going into closed session, we really have a responsibility to know what we're voting on when we vote to go into closed session. So I, I do have some concerns about that, and I think it's something that we do need to look at as an agenda item in the very, very near future.
Rhonda?
Well, in the interest of transparency, I did meet with the district legal counsel, and it was decided that we would work to improve on this transparency and accountability in regards to our closed session notices to the public. The improvements we will work towards will be, help us to be as specific as possible while maintaining sensitive privacy on matters that are necessary. So I think that's something we need to, we need to definitely talk about doing in the near future.
I, I agree. I mean, I looked at some examples, it didn't seem like huge changes. If it's personnel, you're still not naming that person by name in your notice, but if it's, you know, if it's contracts, you know, contracts for windows and bricks, then you would say a little bit more about that. So I, I suppose if someone in the, even though the meeting's still closed, if someone from the public has a lot to say to board members about windows and bricks before that happens, they have a chance to do that, so.
And I honestly feel, I personally feel that I would be better, and feel better about going into a closed session, voting to do that, with having a bit more information about what, the extent of what I'm voting on to do that, in fact.
So would it make sense, I'm thinking it might make sense to have a smaller group meet with Melissa, or maybe Sandy, who writes the closed session notices, to kind of see what, what's, you know, because there are certain legal requirements, and what, what would, what would fit. I don't know, is that? What do you think, Melissa? And then bring that discussion back to the board, is what I'm thinking.
So in, in talking to Rhonda, Rhonda had brought this to my attention before, I didn't know that other board members had had concerns too. So the original plan was we would, for next week's closed session, we will, we're hearing your concerns, and we will work to improve and include more details, the details that you're seeking. And then you can review that when the posting is, or if you have ideas as to what you would like to see, let me know before Friday, so that I can work with Sandy to get those details included. And then look at that and see if that's meeting, what's meeting your needs. Our next board meeting is until February. I know most of you will be at the WASB convention, but we thought we could get together the week after you get back from WASB, and that will be before the next board meeting, so that you would have an opportunity to see what, what we could potentially do with this next posting, and then give us some more feedback as to what else you would like to see. Does that make sense?
I would think that, that we've got a board meeting coming up, and, and I know that the, the legal notice in the paper does say, basically, you know, it, the, the statutory language, but we, we don't put it on our agendas, the printed agenda that we're going into it. The minutes that, that are published say nothing about what the closed session was, it just says we went into closed session. I think those are things we could remedy right away. I don't think we need to spend, wait till next February or next month to, to take care of some of those things.
Well, closed minutes are not, are not published with the open meeting minutes. And if you look at other school districts, those aren't, those are not...
I'm not talking about publishing minutes. I'm talking about the fact that, and I can show you examples of, of school districts nearby where their minutes say they did go into closed session, and, you know, talked about personnel, talked about contracts, what have you. Currently, as, as I look at the minutes that are published, all it says is we went into closed session. And for a person in the public, pardon me?
So you want it at the end of this meeting minutes?
Yeah, instead of separate, it comes here.
Yeah, 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 right.
Yeah, which is easy enough to do. Yeah.
Yeah, and the notice, right, and the notice that Brenda reads is on, is currently on the website. If you go into the list of meetings where the notices are published, all of the closed, that Brenda does read is all on the website as well, if you go on the board's website. So every, every notice...
It, it refers you to Neptune, and I, you know, as I looked at the, the minutes, I did, I did not see that there.
It's not on Neptune. So if you go under Board of Education, and then you go on Board Meeting Dates, and then click on every single meeting that we've already had, every single posting, meeting notice is posted for those meeting dates, and it includes the open meeting posting that Sandy posts, and the closed meeting that Brenda reads. So they are all on the website for all open and closed meeting postings.
But we would be moving forward, looking at, be, to be able to be a bit more specific in general?
Correct. The meeting notices, the closed meeting notices, as I think both Ed and all of you have acknowledged, they meet the letter of the law. We're looking to provide some more details to the extent the law can provide, to the extent the law allows us, in those meetings, to provide greater transparency, and we absolutely can do that. Absolutely.
And again, that, that's for, for dual purposes, so that when we take the vote, we, we know what we're voting on, and probably even, well, as important or more important, that the public sees what we're going into closed session about, and...
Absolutely.
So it sounds like there isn't, I'm not sure that it, that it's necessary to have meetings, but maybe we work through these, you know, at the, at the end of our neck, or after our closed session is at the end of next week, we can have another discussion about, you know, whether it's, whether that met the...
Yeah, that would be great.
What you're interested in terms of increasing that transparency, and just kind of take it step by step, instead of, because it doesn't sound like tremendous amount of change. It's just, it's just finding that balance between what the law allows us to do, providing enough transparency to the public, and, and where is that balance, and how do we want to do that. So, so I'm, so we'll, we'll have you work with that for the closed session announce, or motion for next Monday.
Correct.
And then, are, and then are we also going to then put the, this closed session minutes at the end of? I mean, right now, is this what they see on the, on Neptune?
I think what you're referring to is, is you want this, what Brenda read, at the end of the organizational minutes?
Yeah, right.
No, I, I think, I just noticed that we're going to consider going into closed session, that's all, and, you know, not the whole thing.
Also, not the whole thing, okay, okay.
Oh, gosh, no.
That's what, that's what we do now. That we go into closed session.
Right, but it's not, it wouldn't, I mean, if you're reading an agenda like this, you wouldn't know. That's what you're asking for. You're asking for the regular agenda.
And on the agenda, if, if, and we know we're going to closed session about, if it's, all right, we're going to consider closed session for A, personnel matters, B, contract, C, litigation. You don't need the whole boilerplate on there, but...
Yeah, just isolate out the two whits, basically.
And you could post a link, Sandy, too, because those agendas are electronic anyway, so we could post a link on the agenda back to the meeting notice that's already on the website, just to make sure that's in both places.
I can do that in Neptune.
Okay. Well, let's look at it. Or we could even have a, just something on there where they, they can find the full meeting notice.
Rhonda?
And, and I, I think as well as, so that when we do take that vote to go into a closed session, that it's, there's some sort of a line item that I know this is what we're going into. So it's, because it's, you know, there are the premeditated closed session topics, and there are the ones that aren't, and I think that covers us as well.
Yeah, I, I think that's great, great feedback.
All right, take a roll call then, Sandy.
Second?
Aye.
Aye.
Ron?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Sit in house?
No.
Warren?
No.
Warren?
Aye. Period's 5-1, so we'll convene across the hall.